Good evening. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. Welcome to the Westwood School Committee meeting.
I'm sorry.
The 5th of April. We're going to start our meeting off with a salute to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We're going to abbreviate our meeting tonight a little bit. We're going to break in a little while for an executive session, and then we'll be coming back after the executive session to finish the meeting off. So we give people a heads up on that. I'd also like to thank the Westwood Media Center, which is live streaming the meeting and also recording it for later viewing on its platform. And thanking Lynda Garfield, Charlotte Lynch for their help in putting this together. And also thanking Shalley, Holly Pease for putting up all the background information we need for these meetings. So next, first thing we're going to head to is discussion items, security update.
Great. So I would like to introduce Steve, well, reintroduce Steve Trask to the committee. Steve is now Art Director of Safety and Security Emeritus. He finished off his time in the district sadly. We're sorry to see him go. But he had been with the district for a year. As you know, the director of safety and security position is something that we implemented last April. And so we had planned to come in and do sort of a one-year look back for the committee about what has been accomplished in that realm. And so we're going to have Steve do that. Before he comes up, I will say that thanks to some excellent referrals, we have identified a new director of safety and security. His name is Steve Cronin, Steve 2-0. And so Mr. Cronin is going to be starting with us the Monday right after the April break. But Steve, welcome. Come on up. Yeah. Is that microphone on? Yes. Okay, great.
Hi. Thanks for having me back. It was just about a year ago, as Emily said, that I first came in front of you folks. And it's a little bit different this time because now I'm surrounded by all my friends there. It just really was wonderful working with that whole crew for the last year. We got a lot of good stuff done, and I'm going to miss them. So let me get right into it because I know you've got a full agenda. So I'll just read to some bullet points that we did over the year, and then happy to take any questions if you have any questions of anything I talk about. But so last April, when I started, we did a complete review of the Westwood Public School Incident Management Procedures. I saw input from Chief Silva and Chief Deckers, and they graciously gave me input, made updates and suggestions that they had. I rewrote the district's active shooter protocol to reflect the run-hide fight model, which is the FBI model and which what Westwood uses now. I created a reunification plan for the district. It's something that Emily felt very strongly about, and I agreed with her on that. So that is completed now, and it's a good plan. It's a two-gate plan. It's a model that is used successfully throughout the country. We created a centralized process for scheduling the annual fire alarm drills, and your last ones should be completed next week, I believe. They were all scheduled before I left, so barring any unforeseen circumstances, they'll all be completed next week. And the lockdown drills, we started again during the pandemic. They were, you know, obviously tough to do. But now each school did a lockdown drill this year. And in addition to that, we did a debrief with the staff after, not only quickly after the drill, but we scheduled other time and met with the staff to kind of table talk what we liked, didn't like, and run through some scenarios of how they could react during actual active shooter scenarios. And I think those went well, and I think the staff appreciated them. Created and implemented a new badging system for each school. It's the same in every school now. It's a lanyard system, color-coded, so we know who the subs are, who the staff are, and who the visitors are. And that seems to be working pretty well. Reviewed and updated the medical emergency response plan and resubmitted that to DESI as is required. All the emergency distress buttons in the district central office in every school, they were located, tested, batteries checked. Locations were checked and confirmed with the vendor, which actually required us to actually activate every one of them and make sure that they were locating where they said they were locating and that the vendor was actually receiving the signal. And so that was all done. Portable radios in every school, they were reviewed. Institute of the plan so that they are now all consistently programmed on the same channel schedule. And every school has the same channel schedule. And we have made it so that when we purchase new radios, they're all the same model so that they're interchangeable. So if one breaks in another school, we can just swap out that radio. Batteries are interchangeable with every radio now. And that may sound like a small item, but batteries for these radios run in about $65, $70 apiece. So if they're not compatible, it's a problem. So they're all compatible going forward, which is good. All the main office phones were reviewed to ensure that they were compliant with the law. They could all dial 911 just by dialing 911. And that they also have an alert tone in the main office so that if 911 is dialed from anywhere in that school, it rings back to the main office and tells them where in the school that 911 came from. That's also required under the law, and we're full compliance with that. The blue light systems in the high school were checked several times. And we also instituted, we also probably just finishing up during April vacation, but the same exact system that's in the high school was just put into Thurston Middle School for the blue lights. When there's a lockdown, you activate the blue lights. They flash, so if you're in an area like the cafeteria, the gymnasium, music room, the hallway during passings, you can't hear the PA. You can see the blue light. You know what's going on, and you take appropriate action. So I know that we ran into some issues with some equipment, and I know that's going to be, it's all installed in Thurston. It's going to be tested during April vacation, and then it'll be up and running. And if I'm wrong, Mike will tell you. We got evacuation chairs. We purchased those for the high school, Thurston, and the Sheehan. They were installed on the top floor of each one of those schools. So if there are students there that have ambulatory issues, they can be evacuated on these chairs in the case of an emergency, and the elevators are an option. PA system at Martha Jones was fixed previously. That would broadcast outside as well as inside at the same time. And now you can broadcast inside only. But there's also a switch that allows you to broadcast on the outside if you need to broadcast on the outside for any reason. So I think the neighbors appreciate that. We addressed some other concerns at Martha Jones. The playground, the fencing was repaired in areas that it was damaged or cut. We put some new signage up, installed at the end of the path, indicating that the playground and the fields were off limits while school was in session. Let's see. We reviewed the security cameras district-wide, identified priorities for camera upgrades. Speaking of which, when the blue light system was put into Thurston, we also upgraded the camera at the front entrance to Thurston and also added a large monitor in the office so that you have a better picture of who's ringing the buzzer at Thurston. And you can also view the other cameras on the egress doors at Thurston so you can see if they're being used during the school day just by looking at the monitor. We did hold some preliminary discussions on the feasibility of constructing vestibules at Martha Jones and Downey schools. I mean, those are obviously capital budget items. But those are, that's doable fairly easy if money becomes available. And I would recommend that. Looking to the immediate next steps, we did file for a grant. I don't know if it's come in yet or not, if it's been awarded yet.
Haven't heard.
Should be like any day. If it's successful, it's $75,000 and change to go into phase two of upgrading some locks in the district and also purchasing some tourniquet kits for each classroom to coincide with our Stop the Bleed program, which every staff member, when they onboard and at the beginning of this year, saw a video on how to stop bleeding. And I don't think I missed anything. I think we're pretty good on that. So before I ask you if you have any questions, I just want to tell you that it wasn't my preference to leave Westwood. There was, I needed to go back to work full-time. That's not an option here at Westwood, which is, and it's not an option for me, even if it was an option at Westwood. So I left here with bittersweet sorrow, I guess. I really enjoyed my time here. The folks here are phenomenal. The district is in great shape, and you guys are going to be fine. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thank you very much for your service. I appreciate it. Do you still live in, what town did you live in?
Franklin.
With a very good girls lacrosse team, I remember.
You were good everything.
I played Allison one night up there in the middle of the rainstorm when we won by a goal in the last.
He's not taunting you or anything.
I don't know whether, but a great, great team.
Franklin's very arrogant about every sport because we're very good. But thanks for saying that.
Any questions?
I actually have a question. What is the scope of magnitude on the vestibules at MJ and Downey?
I'm sorry, what is the what?
The scope of, like, how much is, what does the feasibility say?
Don't have actual quotes. We got ballpark figures. You know, it depends on what you want to do. Like on Downey, excuse me, MJ, when you walk in, you have that kind of like glass wall. So you put the vestibule, you put the doors across where you take the left to go into the main office, right? You put the doors there. You blow out the glass wall, and you put a wall and a door to the office there. So when you, so you can go into the office, or you can just keep it a wall and have like a little tray like you have at a bank. You know, put things in so nobody has to enter the school proper. And then you do very similar to Downey. And you have one in the new school that you're building now. It's a vestibule. You come in, no one has to get into the school. They can get in and out of the elements. They can talk to the staff. They can pass things through to the staff, but no one ever has to come into the end of the school. And those doors can remain locked at all times.
And do you know, I know they were high-level quotes, but do you have any?
Yeah, you're probably looking at in between, the doors are expensive. If Tom was here, he could probably like slap me if I was too wrong. But it's probably like $75,000 or $100,000 per school.
Per school.
That's a, that's a non-construction guy's quote.
And just thinking about the setup of the Sheehan, it's not possible to do that there, right? Because it's going up and down.
Sheehan is, yeah, because when you walk through, you go up, down without, there's no space. Now you could build, you could build out from the steps, but then now you're coming into the parking lot. Sheehan's tough. Sheehan stuff, there's not a lot of options in Sheehan. And it's very similar to Thurston, you know. I mean, those schools are old, and they weren't constructed with any of this in mind.
Well, I also wanted to say thank you. I think that this was, I think you were fantastic for the district, and I feel a lot better every time we talk to you. I just wanted to thank you, and we will miss you.
Again, I will miss this place. But so, you know, when they had the swatting incident, I was not here. I checked in on my friends, and they were all fine. Everything went fine.
Yeah, that really happened very significantly.
They reacted perfectly. And so that should give you a lot of, should make you feel good because they did great.
I want to say, I think that's sort of, you know, I think in general, I commented in my memo to you that I think the, you know, return on investment for this position is really very clear. And we had originally, when we talked about this position, it was on the heels of the district-wide security audit. And we had kind of thought of it as like a, maybe a two-year plan to sort of respond to it. I would just say that at this point, I feel like this position provides ongoing value. And I think that our ability to respond to that swatting incident recently is a good example of that, that we were aware of what was happening in other districts. We had talked about it in advance, you know. We had a plan. The message that I was able to get out to the community almost instantly was because Steve had, you know, provided templates. We were all ready to go. So we, you know, we just had to do sort of a quick cross-check to say, is it option A or B depending on the circumstances and react appropriately. And I think having somebody who on an ongoing basis is just thinking about these things and keeps us trained and has the resources available has been really important. So thank you. And I would also say that having someone in this position, I think we had good communication before with our police department, our fire department. But having someone in this position has just really enhanced that communication, and it's just happening on an ongoing basis, which has been great.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks so much.
I wanted to just bring up a quick kind of like follow-up item. No, do whatever you'd like. So it ties into Steve's presentation. So we've been talking a little bit about safe gun storage. And we did the presentation with Western Youth and Family Services and the police back in November. And of course, you know, since we last met, there was another terrible episode of gun violence, mass shooting at a school. And in 2022, the CDC found guns to be the number-one cause of death for children. So it seems like, you know, there's some need for some education would be helpful. So I wondered if we could put on the district website where we, in the wellness area, where we put other SEL-type topics, just an educational piece surrounding the gun safety laws en masse so that parents and students might become familiar with them. So just something brief about how you have to keep your gun locked up and the ammunition separate with the idea that children and people in crisis don't get their hands on guns.
I think it's a good idea. I mean, at the least, it's a resource, right, for people to go to if they're, if they want to find more information.
Right. And it's not anti-gun. It's just relaying the law and the responsibility that adults have to keep kids safe.
I think as educators, we all agree that making sure people who are in crisis don't have access to guns is really important with the safety of those kids and others. So I absolutely agree. And one of our, one of our goals for this spring had been, and Steve was working on this, and so we sort of have a draft, is to get a section of the website up that just addresses some of the common questions that we get asked about safety and security. Obviously, we don't share all of our security measures publicly. But, you know, I mean, sadly, every time there is just a horrendous incident in this country, we, you know, understandably, people's anxiety goes up. We could ask questions. And so we think that having a place where people can sort of.
Like an FAQ?
Like an FAQ. So people can see sort of what are some of the steps that we take here? What are our preventative measures? And so I think we could potentially use that area of the website to provide that resource to people, if that makes sense. I can do that. I'll connect with you about that.
Thank you.
Anything else on this topic? Now going to move ahead to some action items. Some limited ones we're going to work on tonight. First is a vote to approve the new community scholarship.
Yes. So I don't know if Charlie knows this. So this is what Amanda just announced at the reception for you, that the school committee has set up a scholarship in honor of Charlie Donahue. And the scholarship will be awarded to a graduating Boston resident student who intends to continue their education at a college or trade school. It's going to be awarded to a member of the class of 2023. And I think this is a very fitting tribute, given Charlie's tremendous support of our MECO program. And so a vote of the school committee is required to set off the scholarship. Scholarship committee starts meeting next week, so we want to get this done.
I move that we approve this Charlie Donahue Community Scholarship.
Second.
Those in favor? Thank you very much. Very happy to do this. Chris came on the school committee, I was asking questions like, I remember going to a graduation for the MECO people, and a couple of the kids said, you know, it's wonderful coming to Westwood to meet kids, but I had to give up all my friends from grades one through five. But everybody was welcoming. So I say, why don't we have, unfortunately, I drew a little crazy question like that. And we found that only two school districts didn't happen. So we put that on the agenda and worked at it, and suddenly some state money came forward. But it was wonderful to expand our program, which is a great program to begin with. So thank you very much. I'm honored by that scholarship for that purpose, too. So thank you.
Great. And yes, the other action item.
Academic decathlon team travel.
Yes. So our high school academic decathlon team has earned eligibility to go to the Nationals in Texas. I don't think this has ever happened before.
It's amazing.
We've made it to Nationals. My understanding is they were fourth in Massachusetts. They're going to the Nationals. And so this is the week after the April break. And so we're here to request approval from the school committee for out-of-state travel.
My usual question is for scholarships for people who can't afford their out-of-pocket costs.
We have absolutely got that covered, and so everyone on the team will be able to go.
Also going to cause a little trouble tonight for things I'm not going to be here, but I'd suggest maybe we invite these kids in at the next. Congratulations.
It's going to be a new chair.
Too much pressure on Tony, but I think it's great to honor the kids for such an achievement.
Yeah.
What were their secrets? What can they tell the younger kids trying to make the team next year?
Yeah.
So like to have a motion to approve the travel for this group?
Second.
Second, those in favor? The chair update. I'll be brief.
Sorry, Charlie, I think we have to vote to approve the March nine minutes.
Oh, I didn't have that on the agenda for tonight. Was it on there? On the period? Oh, stand corrected.
Yeah. Are we not approving them?
No, it would be a good idea to approve it.
Yes, go right ahead. Sorry.
Should I have a motion to approve any questions or a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Second.
Those in favor? Thank you for catching that. I'll do something that's very difficult. Emily said I have 10 minutes, which for an Irish person can be a very challenging thing to do. But I just thought I'd share with you some of my observations that might be useful to you in the future. And first of all, I think I was on the school committee at the time where I knew superintendent. And we're very lucky to get Emily. But I remember all the discussions and the pros and cons. And so we're very, very lucky to get her. Having worked with her twice now as chairman, I just can't believe the decisions she makes every day. There's at least 10,000 decisions. And how lucky we were to have her going through some unusual times. So I think the school district really owes an awful lot to you and your leadership and the talent of the people you brought together and support. So I want to thank you very much, Emily.
Thanks, Charlie.
Particularly, one of my first meetings was a student, the advisory committee, the Special Education Advisory Committee. And I had kids that had special ed needs and really appreciated it. But I really got appreciation for what Abby had done in bringing in quality people. And the parents were so well-educated and helping each other out really at those meetings. It was a tremendous first education that I had. Allison has always got us data information. It's been very powerful. Steve, Holly Pease, Lema, oh, I can't, when we started to meet recently on our budget, where we didn't have the money because of all the increased things, and we sat down with the support of the select board and the various other town committees. I think they're amazed by Lema's knowledge of their budget as well as ours. They went through every detail and educated them really quickly. So it was very impressive on having somebody like her and her knowledge. And also, I think they're very impressed with how well-organized we were. And they came forward really to help us out through a very difficult financial time. The media center has been great to us and kept the word out at our meetings and many other organizations. I want to continue to thank Melinda and Charlotte for that. I think the greatest challenge we had that I can remember was 2020, we had the COVID. And there was no guidance for the federal government and state government. You're on your own. And we had teachers who were vulnerable, who had health problems that didn't want to get COVID. Most of the deaths were over 65 in that range. And so Tony and I heard Wellesley was trying to do something. So we got in touch with the Wellesley people, and they had enough to sit down with us. They had a fellow from the Broad Institute who was doing all of the Harvard MIT Joint Center. They were doing all the testing of the Boston colleges. You had to get tested twice a week to stay in school. And so this fellow went before the school committee in Wellesley. His wife was a teacher. And he said, we need to start doing testing, $85 a test. For us, it'd be $300,000 to do that. And we, no one ever planned for it. No one had their budget. So Tony and I got a lot of good education. He continued on working with our local doctors, and I started to continue meeting with that group, Zoom calls every two weeks. The Rockefeller Institute was involved, Broad Institute. And all of a sudden, somebody out of New York said, you know, we tried something where the kid spit in a tube. And you do 24 tests at the same time, it's $5 a test. That was the magic overnight where you could afford it. And from then on, it's what do you do when you find the kid it has it? Who gave it to them? Who did they give it to? You go step by step by step to the masking. I know we got education from our students who said, you know, we're not wearing masks for ourselves. We're wearing it for our grandparents and our friends' parents. So we got a lot of education in that process. I just bring that up only because I don't think the pandemic type of things are over. They're still looking at variants that are out there. But the way Emily put together, we had tents, we had nurses come in, the kids got. And when Allison did that analysis a couple of years ago about school districts, in the best state in the country, the lowest lost education from the pandemic was Massachusetts. 350 cities and towns. Westwood in mathematics, in English, in science ranked like two to five in the least lost education. And when I asked that question, it's our teachers. The teachers are so outstanding that when they had that few moments with the kids. So that's going to come back, I think, unfortunately. But I want to thank, one of my pet projects has done the third-grade history program at the Fisher School. Some of our 25 years, they've interviewed a lot of seniors, say, what's your best day in education at Westwood? It's my third-grade day. They think they're going to Disney World. I've been taking it over for five years. One of our great teachers was Joseph Joanny. She went over and got dressed up in an 1865 uniform. They couldn't believe her. They thought she just came in. Where did she come from? But I've been working with Sarah Cronin. The education is going to be taken over by the school department. So that program will be saved, the only place in the country where they're doing a program like that to make history come alive for kids. This Neil Carnegie thing has had some problems getting people to appreciate it. The two kids go through it and said the best education I ever had. So I hope you keep it going, see, maybe educate more parents about its value. My granddaughter, who did, is very quiet, modest, quiet girl. I was told that during the graduation from the Martha Jones, they had a professional speaker come in to talk to the kids about motivating them to study, to do education. And this, and I said, that wasn't a professional, that was my granddaughter. She just did Neil Carnegie. She'd know how to speak, how to motivate people. So that is something over there that could be resurrected. I've also given Holly some coffees. I've been very quiet about this because I didn't want to be too pushy. As long as I'm pushy, I'm willing to be. But I started taking courses myself about 15 years ago. A company was set up where the fellow who was at law school at Harvard, and he had to take an exam in contracts. And he'd been sick, and they said, well, there's a course available on the VHR, PCI, you could do it. So anyway, he went and worked in the Congress, and what they're trying to figure out, how do we improve education? Holly, did that stuff I gave you? Okay. I think everybody has a coffee. Anyway, this guy set up, we need to go find the best teachers in the country. Take him to Iowa, take him to the inner cities. And maybe make the teachers better teachers, but maybe the kids could do this on their own. So he set up his own company called The Great Courses. He went around the country, interviewed the students in the colleges, and said, who are the best teachers? Who would you recommend somebody take a course? They came up with a list, and they brought them into Washington and had them do the course. So what I handed out to you is 130 courses in colleges out there at the Westwood Library, the Norwood Library. So what I handed out to you is 130 courses in colleges out there at the Westwood Library, the Norwood Library. The biology course you take at Duke University is there. There's literature courses, there's courses in history, there's courses in computer science. Four courses taught at West Point. You don't have to be an engineer to do it. How did the Romans build these things without mathematics? So they're fantastic ways of getting curiosity. So I, I've not been too pushy because my wife and I donated them. But I expect you people may be pushy to say, oh, we take it available of these things. I'd love to see a bunch of Metro kids do it as a group. There's a couple on Black History that are in the series now. So that I think that's a great way to continue education. I'll share with you a brief story. Irish brief is something else. There's a girl I know, in, in order to teach at Ursuline. So she said, I took into the school one day, the classics of American literature, the most popular course at Brown. And I did some lectures for the kids. They said, this is what college is about. You learn about, you know, who, you know, who these American writers were and the reasons behind it. She said, yeah. She said, where did you get? She said, it's at that Norwood Library. So she takes, goes back next year, says, I took the course all summer. And I read some of the books. It was much more interesting to read Moby Dick with a lecture than read the book. 300 pages of the Pacific Ocean is a little too much. So applying to Brown, she says, I'm going to apply to Brown. She does. She says, you know, in the interview, they're going to ask you what books you've read. Just tell them you've already taken a course. They love ballsy, pushy people. So she goes in for an interview. How did it go? She said, they couldn't believe I took a course already. She got in. She met the guy, took courses with him, said, now it's changed her life. She wants to be a teacher. So anyway, I'd like to have, how do we take advantage of this? Kids could do it. A teacher could be a lead person. I know families in Westwood that have done it as families, where the father has said, I didn't realize my kid was that smart. You know, we're doing the Civil War and the kid said, I didn't know my father was that smart. They talk about what the lecture was. So anyway, I wasn't too successful, but I just mentioned that to you. It's something that would be well worth seeing if we can do anything further with it. And the, secondly, I wanted to just say, our biggest challenge after COVID was a new school. Remember, we did the analysis of all the schools, which one do we need? We brought out the, the people that give you money. They couldn't believe that we still had a school alive that was built in the late 40s, early 50s in Manhattan. They said, you people are unbelievable. We have people wanting new schools that were built in the 60s and 70s. You get this going. This is, so Emily and I were in there for the day they gave us money. And when they announced Westwood got 18,000, $18 million, no one could believe it. There's Lawrence and Lowell and tough places need. How they helped, they said, it's because these people kept it alive for 30 years longer than any.
People from Lawrence and Lowell were there getting money, too.
Yeah, they were.
I just want to say, we take all the money. Yeah.
But they were shocked. Why are you going to? Well, anyway, so the nomination I got for the best decision I ever made as the chair of the school committee was appointing mayor as chairperson of the whole thing. She was with three IP consultants. It was unbelievable. So the second thing I did, I said, the committee that's going to be organized with, with mayor's chairperson, we're not going to have a representative. We're going to have all the school committee members. Eight o'clock in the morning, every two weeks, we met. They, they looked at me every morning like you're a son of a. They came, but they knew every deep, every, every piece of wood because of the, we learned everything. We brought the town together for about 70 meetings, everybody's input. What do you think? What, give a shit? They, they, they didn't want to go to any more meetings. They'd had so many meetings. The end result, we got a 75% vote override with, you know, usual people complaining, all because of that educational effort that was made. And then finally getting into the last stage or so. It's remarkable what you did as a leader of the, the effort.
It was not me.
It was unbelievable. But you knew how to, you know, twist somebody's arm to get more people to vote.
I did do that.
Very good at that also. You know, talking to people who were complaining. Could you talk to them, Charlie, please?
Yeah.
But that was, the second crucial decision I think we had to make was we're negotiating with our teachers who wanted a fair compensation, but there wasn't any new money. You know, so we, the town helped us. We went through that bit, but, but you and Tony stood in there, working with our teachers, showing the respect for them that we had till a miracle happened and we were able to find some money. And finally, you and Tony took the lead in searching for a superintendent, one of the most important things we had to do. The committee is set up, did an outstanding job. I don't know if we could publicize the members of that committee at some time because I think.
And they were, they were.
On the website.
At one of our meetings, maybe, just to tell all this. It would be nice to thank in this, this method. But they did a fantastic, the candidates were outstanding. We were very, very lucky. Thank you for your leadership in that. And then finally, the work you've done to complete the contract negotiations. So I also wanted to just thank, you know, my opportunity to work with Dory on the legislative council. A chairperson is over here. Legislative council. And there's a lot of great thoughts, great ideas. Hopefully they'll help us with signage for cars that are idling. And, and if anyone wants to find me, I'll be at lacrosse games with the girls while we're working at our great colhe. Good luck at Dartmouth and.
Thank you.
Good luck in your law degree and your Senator, either Senator or Governor. About 20 years. But thank you for all your contributions. We've had great help with ideas from your goats. And I want to also thank Amanda for her patience. I think I made it to 600 policy.
Oh, gosh.
Never want to retire a school committee member. But we got great help from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and that. But it was a great chance to meet you and have a chance to work with you. But thank you all so much. But that's the end of my comments. I think I made it in under 10 minutes.
Well, Charlie, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
This is Charlie's last meeting. Thank you for amazing nine years of service. You leave an amazing legacy, excellence. And as I said earlier in the, we had a forum for Charlie before this. I don't think anyone bleeds green, Westwood green, like this guy.
Yeah.
He loves, he loves this town. He loves the schools. He loves the kids. And your dedication and impact will be long lasting.
Well, thank you very much. It's been my pleasure and I'll keep in touch. If you need to find me, I'm at a lacrosse game, you know.
Yeah, we'll walk you. We're walking your dog. We're walking your dog. I'm walking the dogs.
The dog is still alive. I think what we'd like to do here is end this, the meeting for the moment. Take a vote to end the meeting to go into executive, executive session. We'll leave the room to have our meeting. We will be coming back here to end after this, if anybody wants to stay around. But do I have a motion to go into executive?
Exact motion? Probably.
I think you should read it.
I don't.
I have it.
Read it.
Yeah, go ahead. The school committee will be going into executive session to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with the new superintendent or contract negotiations with the new superintendent, which would have detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if the discussion were in open session. The board will return to open session.
Second.
Motion? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll be back shortly.
When you come back to open session, I think there's only one item on the agenda. After that, right, is to vote the superintendent's contract. Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't think.